It's seven o'clock. The meeting will come to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Dornhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lisperance.
Here.
Press your pairs.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Present.
Clerk Slater, here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Article three, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
That's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations. Deputy Chase has a scheduling conflict tonight, so she will be at the next meeting in two weeks. We have one presentation tonight. It's a zoning recommendation update from the planning commissioner. Members of our planning commission are here tonight to share recent zoning findings and recommendations to this board. This is a presentation to the board. It is not a public hearing or an open Q and A. I am very aware that this is a hot topic for many people. And if the process proceeds, there will be plenty of opportunities in public for both public hearings and Q and A. Any changes or revisions to the township zoning ordinance would require publicly noticed hearings at both the planning commission level and the board of trustees. Chairperson Nordike, Commissioner Rizzi, welcome. Chairman Nordike, please proceed.
Thank you for having us, Scott. I remember Rizzi is going to start with a quick presentation and then I'll talk to you about the recommendation that we have for the trustees.
You can hold that for a minute. Let's go and try and curl up. Good evening, Scott Rizzi. I I will give you guys a very brief history of how we got here today. And then I'm going to describe this map a little bit. And we'll describe what uses are currently allowed in the area of topic. And we're going to describe the master plan future land uses that are currently listed for that area. And then we'll talk about the planning commission memo a little bit that I think you guys had in your packet. That was kind of yeah, I'll let Chris get into more of that and what the planning commission talked about at its last meeting. So, see here if I can do this right. Did I do that right? Hey, look at that. I'll let Chris start with that. So a little bit of history of how we got here today. About several months ago, there was a request from an applicant that wanted leased land from the Gerald R Ford International Airport to put a temporary structure along Thornapple River Drive. It was, I guess the best way to describe it, a tent or a hoop house structure over a thousand feet long. It would have been covered in black fabric. They were going to do some testing for automotive technologies there. What's that?
It was LiDAR.
LiDAR. Yeah, and and so the planning commission had to review that request. They were asking for some exemptions currently in order to build in that area. You would have to extend water and sewer. That was one of the exemptions they wanted. This was a temporary thing. They were only going to be there for five years. The planning commission ultimately approved the request but didn't approve it as it was as they requested it. We added a lot of conditions, which apparently they didn't like because they never built the structure. But that was going to be in down here, right along Thornapple River Drive. I believe right in this area. If I'm not mistaken. And and so after that happened, the, there was a lot of feedback from the public and the planning commission decided we needed to take a broader look at what zoning was allowed in the airport zoning area and in that industrial area. So we started, we formed a subcommittee, we started to review that. And then shortly thereafter, there was discussion that maybe we should also include these other areas that were mastered or future land use planned for industrial in that discussion as well. So we kind of zoomed out, if you will, and looked at that whole region from M six.
Future land used zoned?
Well, the the term master plan and future land use map are kind of the same thing.
No, we got to clarify this because this is going to be confusing.
Okay.
A zoning ordinance is a law with penalties and consequences for not following it. A master plan is a policy document that expresses merely intent. It's not an enforceable document. It's not law. So that has been very confusing and I think troubling to people. A master plan has no bite, no teeth. It's not the law. Zoning is up to this board and the current zoning is labeled as it is. So let's not confuse the two because if I were a resident, I think there's been a lot of questions about that. Master plan is not zoning. So what is it currently zoned as?
It's currently zoned as agricultural.
That's it. Keep going.
Okay, so so that's how we got where we are today, essentially. And so I'll describe the map as to what it is currently set today. So right now, as I look at the map, this yellow region is considered agricultural rural conservation district labeled ARC. You'll hear the term ARC, that's agricultural rural conservation. Currently, we allow, and these are just some of the uses that are allowed there, not all of them. I'm just highlighting a few at random. Single family, mobile homes, agricultural uses such as farming. That pretty much sums up what we allow in the ARC district. Special, under a special use permit in that area, we allow private airports, golf courses, trailer parks, campgrounds, outdoor storage, kennels, hospitals, greenhouses, nurseries, mineral extraction, group daycare. Those are special uses that would have to come to the planning commission to get an approval. But then the if you will, the airport has two zoning categories. There's a AC sub one, which is this green area. And in that area, we allow obviously airport airport operation, aircraft operation facilities. And then there's hotels, rental establishments, restaurants, banks, used car sales, freight terminals, warehousing and government buildings. In that district, the AC district, the township kind of waves its right to have them come in for a site plan approval or any approval process with the township board of the planning commission.
Real quick for those in the audience, just what is this area? If you describe it to the
This is the, this is the core of the airport, essentially. All of this green region labeled AC sub one. The other portion of the airport, which is in, I guess, more of a pink and also along Patterson over here. Those areas are sub zone two. And in sub zone two, we again allow aircraft operation facilities, business service centers, freight terminals, parking structures, general storage, warehousing and government buildings. And then if they come to the planning commission for a special use permit, they can do things like hotels, restaurants, banks, barber shops, dry cleaning, flower shops, that type of stuff. If the planning commission and the township board approved it.
Has any of that happened?
I'm not aware of anything.
Nothing's coming for us.
Nothing's coming for us. So the other area on the map is this shaded area along essentially 36th Street and part of Thornapple River Drive. It extends down to roughly where 44th Street and Thornapple River Drive used to intersect kind of south of that FedEx facility right around there. And everything from an imaginary line there to the north is zoned industrial. And in that area, as long as it's 500 feet from a residence, we allow manufacturing, general storage warehouses, building and trade contractors, and under special uses, batch plants, office buildings, gas stations, livestock auctions, freight terminals, veterinarian clinics, just to give you a kind of broad, there's a lot of uses listed in that zoning category. That's a very small portion of them. And so our our zoning, our, I gotta say this right. Our future land use map.
Nope. Yeah, but that's part of the master that is not zoning.
Right, our future land use map shows this area as potentially an industrial area. And our, our zoning ordinance under transitional industrial specifically calls out this area as, as intended to allow for low impact industrial uses and supportive ancillary service and commercial activities 200 feet from a residence. So I wanted to highlight that because our industrial zoning is 500 feet setbacks. And the transitional that our zoning ordinance specifically states is for west of M six in that 48th Street, 52nd Street area is 200 feet. And so that was one of the concerns the subcommittee had in this discussion is over time, this area, well, 20 some years ago, when that future land use map, not zoning, future land use map was created, most of this surrounding area was all ARC. And since then, there have been several new developments in areas that have been zoned R one, which are right across the highway from this area.
What type of developments?
Housing developments.
Residential.
Residential. And, and so the concern is that maybe we need to take a better look at that area. And since we started talking about it, we've had a lot of community input from those areas, people concerned about what uses could potentially be right next door. And so the memo was essentially meant to spark some conversation at the planning commission level because the planning commission needs to create what the community ultimately wants. That's essentially our job is to have good planning and to define what uses are permitted or restricted based on that public input we received. And so we developed, we had the memo that you guys have seen. There were three options on it. Option one was no change. Everything stays the way it was.
It is.
The, the problem.
This is not a public question and answer. He will present. Public comments are next.
The the, we, we tried to look back at the history of how this came to be. And we were on a, or I should say the planning director was unable to really uncover any minutes or notes from meetings through a public process that would have taken place 20 years ago to, or or even further back to, to get us to where we are today.
What did you find?
We have, we found nothing. And that, that, that was what became quite alarming is this when this happened 25 years ago and in time, I don't know if you remember because I think you were on, but like there, there was no, it was just put into the plan. There was no public interaction, no, no public requests, no public hearings that we could find. And we asked Ryan to go deep and look for it. We couldn't find anything.
We found no record of, other than the map just was suddenly painted.
What about meeting minutes?
Nothing in the meeting minutes. One day, when the, when the consultant that we used at that time, they just came back with a new map, right? And this is similar to old 28th Street, right? And our most recent master plan, there's these grand ideas of cutting it up. I didn't have, I, I don't think that it will happen, right? But some consultant had an idea and it got put into the map.
And it was rubber stamped.
And it was absolutely rubber stamped by the
Did you see any evidence at the planning commission or the board of any public presentation? Public deliberation, public deliberations?
Not regarding that area.
Public decision making?
None.
So would you agree that zoning is a legal process, but a swap of a future land use map? Is it, is it, you know, there's nothing binding on that?
Nothing binding on that. It's, it's
If anything, it's bad practice.
Right.
And that's how you make enemies.
Certainly without the public's input, I think it's bad practice. And I think we, as a township, have changed that direction.
So, so we're going off of something that no, we have no public record of how it came to be. It's just swapped at some point.
It swapped when the master plan was amended by whichever consultant we were using at the time.
So option one was to just go home and do nothing, which might actually sound good at this point.
Yes.
Option, option two, we talked about changing the master plan to not have any industrial or transitional industrial in these yellow areas west of M six and to just leave it agricultural as it is today. And and essentially make sure that the uses that are allowed in that area align with what our residents want. Because there may be some uses that aren't in there that they'd like to see, or there could be uses that are in there that they don't want to see. So, and then the third option was kind of a hybrid approach and there was some time spent on that. Part of that really addressed the uses in the airport zoning areas very, much more detailed in that particular option. It allowed some agricultural uses to, to remain. That was not the case under the, that was not the case under the future land use map. If we ever went in that direction, those uses wouldn't be allowed. So this was to allow that agricultural to remain there. It had some limitations on the airport that prevented the gas stations and restaurants and things a lot like that. It allowed the airport greater flexibility to expand to the west towards craft. And it was an option, I think that you could say had something for everyone, but it did seem to get a lot of pullback from homeowners that were on the east side of M six. And I'm, part of that is they may not understand the predicament of where we sit today from what happened 20 some years ago versus where we'd like to be. So those were, those were kind of the, just to sum up the, the options.
And I, so 20 some years ago, someone swapped out a map. Other than that, zoning wise, has anything changed legally throughout the, through the public process, which is the only way that you amend zoning?
I am not aware of any land zoning changes other than maybe areas that are currently zoned airport that perhaps in the past had been agricultural. So, and with that, I think I would let Chris talk about what the planning commission did.
Sure. Thank you. Actually, I've got, if you would, a few pictures that I think illustrate this better. That's our, our current airport. You googled earlier today. You can see the industrial down here, right? We're talking about here, these nice green areas, right? I want to show you another picture. This is our previous airport. So this was from the 50s. And we ran out of room at this airport, but, but it looked really familiar, right? There's a lot of green land. And we ran out of space, so the, the airport moved here. Okay. And when that happened, there was a huge opportunity to put a industrial park in and it's Roger B Chaffey today, right? So let's fast forward 60 years. And this is what it looks like, right?
So we could one day look like that also.
Well, let's go deeper, right? These are some of the nice facilities that we drove by. And, and this is, this is my concern. This is why we're in front of you. One, we don't think there was a public hearing when this came out and that that's concerning. But, but also 60 years from now, we don't want this to be around our residential neighborhoods, right? The majority of our tax income comes from our residential base.
Seventy-two percent.
Thank you.
That's why Cascade is as affluent as we are, 72%. It's residential home values.
And that is really unheard of in most communities. It's something, and the, the, the value of those properties, we, we are concerned as this type of thing happens. And not now, I'm sure it'd be beautiful if it's built now, but this is what it turns into. And so as a planning commission, we put the subcommittee together and to, to look at this. And they did a fantastic job looking at the options and we presented the options to you only so that you could see that we considered all options. It was really important to us to, to do that. But in my five and a half years on this planning commission, the last year and a half as the chairman, I have never had so many residents approach me upset about this potential of industrial in their backyard. And it, it, it's a concern. So as a planning commission, we voted as a majority to recommend that this stays as agricultural with a few slight changes, if you could put that back. And what I'm looking for from you tonight is, is just to give us some guidance to make sure we're on the right path. But we would vote, we would recommend that it stays agricultural that we put in this AC sub two, some additional requirements on the airport and limit what can be there. But for this area, we'll keep it as ag, but also we want to open it up to a few things like open spaces, right? Could there be some parks? Could there be a mountain bike park, right? These types of things. And this is what we'd like to bring. We'd also like to restrict some of the higher end ag stuff. I think processing things of that nature, right? Stuff that we wouldn't rot around our, our residential areas. So again, what we're looking for from you tonight, if you have questions, certainly happy to answer them, but also you know, guidance and more general, hey, this is the direction that we want you to continue to go in or you're way off base, step back.
Chris, did you look at the percentage of agricultural zoned areas to commercial industrial zone?
And, and just this area?
Overall in the township, because I, my opinion is we probably don't have very many egg zones. We've got a lot of commercial industrial and as Grace said, housing, which is a primary taxing, tax revenue for us and why we're affluent community and one people want to live in. But I'm wondering if you looked at how much egg we have versus how much commercial industrial we have in the township, not just around here, but in the township in general.
I don't have those numbers.
We can get them. And by the way, the, the next step is we're going to draft a change to the master plan. We've already kicked off the process by communicating to other communities and, and regulatory agencies that, hey, we're looking at this. And so the next step, Tom and I actually sat on the phone with the lawyer to go through that process and understand it. And so thank you for that. The next step is we'll draft something and bring it to you. So that's absolutely information, Jim, that we can bring when we have that presentation, the formal presentation to you.
Thank you.
So 72% of our taxes are from residential properties. And the reason we are so well off is because our property values are much higher. Residential houses are worth a lot. People like our schools, people feel safe. It's a desirable community to live in. 22% is commercial. So that means where you shop, that's along 28th Street. That's 22%. Just over 6% is industrial. So what I keep hearing is, oh, do you know where Cascade gets its money from? The airport. Do we get any taxes or any income from the airport, Ben?
Uh, no, it's primarily tax exempt.
And the developments that come in, there's so many different tax exemptions. Did you guys get any feedback on? You know, we hear the lure of, oh, this is a moneymaker for the township. Did you hear anything about? I've heard there's so many tax abatements out there at the state level that really they're exempt for a long time. Do you have anything that you've heard on that?
Only speculation in conjecture. We, we don't typically get into the tax side of it, but I having developed commercial land myself, I know that there's a lot of tax loopholes and abatements to your point. And if I were a developer, that's certainly something I would be looking for.
And certainly any big developer would be aware of those types.
I think further, any big developer would be looking for the township to participate. At least they were looking in it. Ben, that's correct, right? They were looking for the township to participate in bringing the water out to their facility. That may have changed now with potential grants, but when you originally met with them, I thought that that's what you mentioned.
Yeah, we did have a conversation about the long term.
And they were looking for the township to contribute to that.
They were looking for a partnership.
So, yeah, so abatements plus the township having to pay to bring water out there to lower our values.
The looking for the township to contribute, was that them coming to a public meeting? Ben?
No, it was not. It was not relegated to the board level because it didn't make sense with our priorities at the time. So, but we have those conversations with developers and we'll say all the time, residential, commercial, you know, about, you know, the ability to extend water and sewer to certain parts of the township.
Again, I've got a couple things to say. I would stress very strongly to your planning commission and underline and put in bold letters, stress strongly what the residents of this township desire repeatedly in surveys that is found on public surveys. And you better bear that in mind because they know where the nearest tree is. And secondly, Mr. Rizzi, you have a lot of great concerns about the Thornapple River.
Mm-hmm.
Being part of the Thornapple River Association. As it is now, vacant land, agricultural land, green buffer, whatever you call it, is a filter from industrial sites.
Yes.
And if you give a damn about your river, you better keep that very strongly in your mind.
This money, this moneymaker for a handful of people who don't live in Cascade Township i- is the same as a slow death for the residents in Cascade Township. So I understand that some people are, you know, saw an opportunity here and, and were really excited. And one even came and tried to broker half his land agricultural, or sorry, half to a township park and half to the industrial. That doesn't work. We're here to represent residents. And I feel bad that there's a few people that really saw dollar signs and saw it. But I, I don't understand how there is a, a large sign visor development that's labeled for sale industrial. What is that based on? Besides backdoor negotiations and meetings that nothing's binding on? No, I'm looking at you because you've been coming to every single subcommittee meeting. I'm not taking it personally, but we refer, sir, this isn't a public Q and A. You can wait. I know your attorney's here too. You've been, you've been busy behind the scenes.
Supervisor Lisperance, if I could address trustee Shipley for a moment. Commissioner Rizzi did vote to keep it agricultural. I just wanted to make sure I put that on record.
I would think that he would be intelligent enough to do that.
I think he's more than intelligent enough to do that. I think he, for all the reasons you talked about, but I'll let him speak for himself.
Do you guys have any idea roughly how far that Thornapple River Drive area is to the river?
Not off the top of my head. I didn't measure that today. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just
We can get Well, I took some measurements on things, but not that one. They're not the one Jim asked. It's hard to anticipate all the scenarios.
Well, whatever we do, we'll do it legally and we'll do it publicly. I'm really sick of this backdoor pressure.
Ask a question?
Yes.
So Scott and, and Chris, and by the way, Chris, 25 years ago, I wasn't around. So on the
Apologies.
Heads up. On the, this is the southeast corner from the north south runway, on the southwest side. Cause I was, I drove around M six, I drove 60th, went all around here. This, so the southeast we know is zoned agricultural. The southwest.
Like here?
Yeah, in that area.
Anything that's gray is industrial.
That's what I thought. Cause there's a lot of space there.
There's considerable space.
A lot of space there and that's already zoned.
And if, if you were to read option three, which was somewhat more detailed, it specifically talked about an overlay B area in that encompassed all of that land north of 52nd and east of Craft up to the runway, essentially, almost to the runway. That area specifically called out for aircraft operations. So if the airport wanted to expand south and west, it could. Currently, the industrial zoning doesn't allow for airport or aircraft operation.
Can you move it over so I can see a little more to the west? Well, yeah. Oh, I said, stop. Yeah, that's right. Right, right, right. I know, but, but 60th Street runs right about
Right on township border. That's right here.
That's what I thought. Yep.
Yep. So
That all, and all of this southwest corner.
You could show it.
Is
Like there you go. Like, all this is industrial.
Okay.
Okay. The white areas on this map are PUDs, planned unit development.
Okay.
So some of those are industrial, some of them are office space.
I just noticed there's just a lot of space there and I thought that was already zoned industrial. So
Well, that area I think has had some growth in the, in the past few years. I think that township did extend water out there a number of years ago.
You're looking for feedback. My feedback would be like John's. I would encourage the planning commission to not do anything with the recommendation of rezoning. I think the ag is a good buffer for the Thornapple River and I wouldn't encourage you to recommend any changes.
Supervisor Lisperance, can I address trustee Kessel, trustee Kessel, are you okay with some of the open uses like parks, things of that nature in addition?
Parks would be appropriate, yes.
And then reducing some of the ag uses, some of the processing type stuff. Those were the, the two changes we were going to recommend.
Those kind of recommendations, I think I would be comfortable with.
Okay.
Not rezoning industrial.
So you're saying as it is zoned ag right now?
Yes.
You cannot put a park. So for that reason, you'd have to change the zoning to put a park or a church or
Or a mountain bike path.
Right.
That, that land, that land is set up very nicely.
Are still very restricted, but it's allowed to do that within the agricultural. Thank you.
Yeah, with the changes that we'd recommend, it would be just open space type stuff.
Right.
Several months. So we just recently held that open house. Several months. So we just recently held that open house for the um. Based on the airport access study and that came up seeing the, the really brief metro council survey that was on next door. Handful of questions, but what popped up immediately was then desired on off ramps off M six at. At least four locations right over here where this um, this topic of. By some, there's a desire to have it rezoned to industrial.
This area. Also, Kilmer.
Mm-hmm.
Here.
Now, once that was brought out in the open, um. No one publicly at least approached the board as far as pushing that. But I spoke to the um, M dot rep who would be overseeing this type of thing. And he just said, well, um, transportation follows development. So right now there's not a need, but five, 10 years, if this area takes off with industrial, then arguably there's a need and we'll be looking at. You know, then, but then someone's got to chase the money down. So it, it's all related extending water and sewers. Extension of water and sewer, controlling that area zoning. These are basic one-on-one tools, one of the few tools that we have in townships. To manage our land use. Which protects property values and keeps residents safe. I mean, our homes pretty much are number one investment for most people. So. I, I get that a, a small handful of people see a very big opportunity for short-term financial gain. But this is classic. I mean, any high-end proactive township sees this for what it is. And, and, and there's pressure there, sure. And we very much appreciate the airport and want to work with the airport. But that doesn't mean Cascade just gets bowled over. We took one for the team when we, when the airport was moved here. That wasn't, people weren't excited about that. We took one for the team when M six was put in. But that doesn't mean we lose, we forfeit our ability to protect our residents.
If you want to date back to that, we then became a charter township.
Exactly.
Because the city Grand Rapids ran their city limits right out along the railroad tracks as allowed by law. And took in the terminal building and what was at one time a holiday inn.
Yep.
For tax revenue.
Yep.
It's troubling how this all kind of, it, it's important that it all gets flushed out now. But it's all related and, and it's kind of disappointing how it comes up in little pieces like, oh, sewer and water. Oh, you know, on off ramps on the expressway, oh, industrial. And once you let that, you open that door. You can see how it's hard to put it back in because nobody wants to live next door to a twenty-six thousand. Square foot temporary cement tent. Well, then they sell. I mean, is a slow death for that part of the township. And I get it. It's attractive. It's a moneymaker, but it's a foolish, shortsighted um decision. Does anyone on this board have any desire to change the area we were just discussing to um? Anything but agricultural with some. Variations. Does anyone have an interest in exploring it being turned to uh light industrial?
I will go on record as negative.
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 Oh, and does everyone understand that the zoning decision lies with this board and corporations and decisions are made in public?
Oh, yeah. I do. And furthermore, I remember being sworn in to, to represent the residents of this township. Now, if the residences township don't like me. In two years, I may not be on this side of podium.
Well, there's some big, big money opposing us, so I have a feeling there may be some uh deep pockets that would like to see us out, but I guess.
Big money inside Ukrainian borders right now too, if you want to get fussy.
But it's important for residents to pay attention, because I didn't pay attention before I was on the board because we live in a nice, quiet neighborhood. But you start paying attention, you realize it's a lot of work to protect what we have. Especially when you live next to an expressway in an airport. And a lot of. Developers that are hungry to get their paws in.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this and for your presentation.
You guys have done a phenomenal job.
Yeah, I know you want our values.
I have a question. How many committee meetings did you guys have on this?
Yeah, twenty-six. I think it was twenty-six meetings. We met uh weekly for, was it uh from August? Until January. And sometimes we met twice a week. So we met in the mornings. We, we would generally meet at seven thirty in the morning. And uh, most of our meetings were around an hour, an hour and a half. We tried to stay on, on task.
So you had twenty-six meetings gathering all this information. So it's not like you just. Changed the man.
And, no, and those meetings were open to the public and, and public attended those meetings.
Thank you.
Did you get a lot of public attendance?
Wouldn't. A lot is probably a hard uh. Uh, you know, we had, we had less than, I would say we had less than. Uh, ten different individuals attend, but. I would say we had more people from the public than we did in our. Uh, other subcommittee meetings of, of the previous year that we, you know, that were also exciting. So it was, it was attended and we took a lot of comments in and. Um, we used that to develop the options that were in the memo that went to the planning commission. Ultimately, the planning commission. Wanted to keep this area predominantly agriculture.
Hmm, good question. Um, how many people were on your committee?
Three. And then we had the, we had uh township legal counsel there as well as the planning director.
Okay, but they're all planning commission members?
That is correct.
Thank you.
The, the commission or the uh subcommittee will continue on uh after this to look at stormwater. So you'll see that later in the year from us. And uh, thank you so much for your input. We will come back to you officially. Uh, as we draft this and go through our public hearings and then to you to your public hearing. So. We'll get the answers to your questions as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Article five, public comments. Now is the time to speak on anything on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Oh, and state your name and address for record keeping, please.
Hi, guys. Uh, my name is Chetian Tuma. Uh, I'm an attorney that represents DEG Development, Visor Development. Uh, I don't think my address is relevant, uh, but I live uh in Eldred Heights. Thank you. So this is owns approximately seventy-seven acres uh in this area that uh your planning commission uh talked about tonight. This is spent millions of dollars on that property. You all know this. Uh, they intend to develop that property. They relied on the master plan in section uh, chapter thirteen A. Uh, section thirteen point two O. Thirteen point O two A of your zoning ordinance. Uh, there it explains that the intent of an industrial, a transitional industrial zoning. Uh, designation uh should be for the redevelopment. Of areas including. The area that Mr. Rissy and Mr. Nordike just talked about. That is part of your zoning ordinance. That is illegal and enforceable.
As it's zoned right now, you can go ahead and try. As it's zoned right now, is your client able to do what it intends to develop on that property? As it's currently zoned?
Reading chapter thirteen A.
I'm asking you a question. As it is currently zoned. Right now.
I didn't realize this was a Q and A.
Nope. Yeah, well, you're asking for a lot.
This is, this is my time.
Is it, is it your understanding as it's currently zoned that your client can do legally what it wants to do? Industrial development?
We'll do what we can to make that happen. Um, but. At this point, uh, I, 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 I want you to understand what the planning commission didn't tell you, okay? Uh, in making the planning commission's recommendation, the planning commission ignored. That industrial property across Michigan and across Kent County is at a critical low. There's a billion dollars in funding that the state just passed to make industrial property happen in Michigan. Uh, they're giving money away to make industrial properties happen. Uh, that would be used in this development. Uh, local property owners want. This zoning designation to be industrial. I just gave you a petition from the affected. Property owners. Signed by them saying, we don't want you to adopt the planning commission's recommendation. Playing commission didn't tell you that industrial property abutting the state's second largest airport and Grand Rapids' largest. Transport, transportation hub just makes practical sense. And we have planes, trains and automobiles all over the place. It's where industrial is meant to be. Planning commission didn't tell you that these properties really aren't well-studied for agricultural use. Soil's dense, it's unirrigated, farming in that area. Doesn't happen a lot. It's going to create runoff issues if it does. You're worried about Thornapple River. I'd be worried about that. Second of all, when you think about it, if you. I'd like additional time for uh.
Maybe an extra thirty seconds. I cut you off. You're right.
Thank you, thank you. Uh. Playing commission ignored that this intends to obtain public utility. Uh, to provide access to the community to prevent uh issues like PFAS or environmental concerns. Playing commission ignored that all but a few homeowners will be really affected by this. Uh, everybody else lives on the other side of M six. They ignored that the twenty-twenty-two strategic plan shows that they want to pay less taxes. If your local homeowners want to pay less taxes, let us help you with that. They speculated that traffic might increase, maybe, but this class A road was designed for this.
Your time is up. Please conclude.
In summary, we're asking that you just consider working with us here. We want to work with you. We want to work with the community. We understand your concerns. We want to be uh as forth, forthright as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we open the comments, boss?
But at the end of public comments.
Okay.
Welcome, sir.
Uh, Jason Jansma, fifty-five, twenty-eight Whispering Timbers. Um. I had this big speech planned. It was going to be funny. But you guys seem to be on the right page here, so I don't need to go into that. All I need to do is ask, why would anybody feel sorry for Vissar? There's no reason to feel sorry for them. They could have attempted to have the previous owner get it zoned properly so that it was industrial and they bought it. And they could do what they wanted to do, but they didn't do that. They bought it on the cheap. Hoping that they could make a ton of money off this and they don't care about any of the residents. This makes absolutely no sense to turn this into, from agricultural. To industrial and they're, they're completely, they're, they're deceitful. They're saying on their signs that it's already industrial. That's ridiculous. It's not industrial and it should never be industrial. Go to the other side of the airport to Kentwood and look at that. All it is is industrial. It's garbage. It's trash. There's no, there's no residences over there. So it makes, it's fine. It doesn't harm anybody. The only people who are going to benefit from this are Vissar, their attorneys and the airport. So this should never happen. And my concern is. That outsiders are going to come in here, affect the next election and get people on the board who are going to be in their back pocket, because I think that already happened before. So we need, as, as residents of this township, we need to keep that from happening. Need to keep people like that out of here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Jennifer Murphy, seventy-thirty Kilmer. First, I want to thank the planning commission. And the board for, for the time they took on this, looking at this. Um. I'd like to quickly say, I'm not sure what residents signed petition, but I lived on Kilmer just under M six and I've never heard of a petition. That I'm in favor of this. So, and I haven't heard of any of our street residents, so I'm curious where that petition was signed. But I just come in front of you as one of concerned citizen. Um, you know, we bought our property nine years ago, built our house, we bought an area, we felt, kept us close to amenities with a short drive, but gave us a feeling of being in the country. We're surrounded by farm, wildlife, river, trees. Um, and I understand when the planning commission started this. You know, they inquired with some homes, but there's many, many more of us that would be impacted by this. That weren't inquired. There's more than forty houses on our street, brand new housing developments. On forty-eighth street across from Thornapple Point, brand new ones at sixtieth and Thornapple River Drive, along with houses that have been here for years and years. More than forty, thirty-five of the houses on our street were built in the seventies. So these residents have been here with the way it was. Um. These streets, Thornapple River Drive, forty-eighth street, sixty-eight street, Thorn Hills, they're not meant for semis and industrial traffic and the heavy traffic. Um, I'm scared to death turning off my street or on my street right now. Add all that extra traffic. That road's not meant for it. Um, I've heard discussions, M six is the buffer between the airport and the residential. I disagree. I can see M six from my yard. If I pay attention, I hear the noise. It's white noise. It is not um loud. It's not, um, I'm not, like I said, concerned getting on and off my street. That traffic doesn't impact me. Um, when I drive up and down Thornapple River. Deer, turkeys, um, those open fields, it's wildlife. That property is the buffer from the airport. M six is not the buffer. And I'm back to the property taxes. Um, most new businesses, I'm a CFO of a company. You go onto the right places, uh, website, the, one of the biggest things they talk about, all the incentives, one specifically. The industrial property tax abatement, PA one ninety-eight. These businesses are not going to pay taxes. In the Cascade Township. And our property taxes are going to go down because our values are going down and we're getting out of here. So. Um, I just think the other things we have to consider, how are your fire and police going to handle this? Our first responders are stretched thin now. How are they going to handle the new calls? Look what's happened at Amazon, sixty-eight. Criminals going around the parking lots, breaking into the cars because there's all these. They're going to be on our streets. They're going to make their way into our neighborhoods. Um. And you know, one thing that I would say though, being a business person and at a planning commission, one resident said. Why don't we start a fundraiser? Let's figure out a way to buy this property back from developers. Get them their investment, let them go about, find somewhere else. Turn it into natural space, park some of those conversations. So. I just hope the board and everyone takes all this into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kyle PC. Uh, I live at seventy-ten Kilmer Street. Um, I've been in this area for about three decades. Uh, so I've seen a lot of growth. Um, I've always viewed Cascade as the ideal place to raise a family and. Have the opportunity to do that now. Um. You know, over the years, it's, it's really been a thing of seeing safety and the, the ability to, to raise a, a family in a safe environment, introducing an idea of bringing in industry. I think is a complete contradiction of the value prop of Cascade Township. Um, I see three main issues. You guys hit on some of them, but I want to elaborate a bit more. Uh, those issues are centered around water quality, the safety for our kids and families. As well as um, obviously the financial downside that this could pose. So water quality, I think is a big one. Obviously, there's this, the exact zoning area uh within the. Overlay um already has existing water quality issues. Obviously from PFAS contamination from the airport. I know that the airport's handling that with bringing in city water. But if we add in another industrial park in this area, obviously that's a bad, bad look for Cascade Township. And could potentially pu- cause potential contamination, not only to the residents that are surrounding that, but also the river, which is literally right there. Um, so I think that's something we really need to consider. The other areas being safety, uh, the Thornapple, Thornapple River is a direct bus route. And I mean, there's kids that live on the street and they get on and off buses, introducing semis and a lot of traffic. Uh, could, could pose potential safety issues. Uh, and then the other being obviously the financial downside, uh, which the only financial upside is for that guy sitting behind me in Vissar. Uh, which makes absolutely no logical sense if you're the township, uh, in my opinion, and I, I really appreciate your guys' time and, and being supportive with this.
Thank you.
Greg Ball with uh DEG of Visor Development. I just want to clear up the sign. Um, home address is sixteen thirty Waller Avenue, Rockford. Um, just to clear up the sign thing, when we bought the property several years ago. We were, it was advertised to us as industrial property. Not trying to pull any fast strings. We always do this when we buy a property and it's master planned. A certain. Zone. We advertise that as that zoning because we've never, ever had this happen to us in the six years we've done this. So it's a little bit of history. It's nothing underhanded. I'm not trying to sell industrial land that's not zoned industrial, but that's called me. I've said it's master plan industrial. But we still have to get utilities there because that's what Ben, Steve Peterson told us when we met with him numerous times before we bought the property. So I've never once heard of a road going in here until I was at one of these subcommittee meetings that Scott was in charge of. We have nothing to do with any new road. Don't know anything about it until I heard him say that. So we're not some big. Monster behind the scenes doing anything. I'm not a big money guy trying to get new people elected. This is your township. That's great. Okay? We're trying to make. The development, industrial development to benefit the township like you've done in City Walker, like we've done in Calidum Township. And if you look at the taxes per parcel, you're not going to get more taxes, houses on that parcel than you would industrial. Overall, of course, you have very little industrial land, so of course the houses generate more taxes. But if you're speaking specifically about a parcel. Industrial will be your biggest tax. It is. Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Broad, do we have anyone virtually?
If anyone virtually participating via Zoom would like to comment during this public comment section over anything on the agenda for only three minutes, please raise your hand. If you are participating via phone. Please dial star nine and I'll wait a moment Supervisor Lasperance. Supervisor, it's back to you.
Okay. Last call. Any public comments on anything on tonight's agenda? Welcome, sir. It's a good opportunity. We really appreciate everyone showing up and if you have something to say, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, uh, my.
Well, uh, my name is Bruce Cawkin. I live at seventy-one hundred Thornview Drive Southeast, just south of Kilmer. And, uh, I would just like to comment that this is a relatively small area. But it's an area that's traveled by, uh, with many, many residents in the area. As somebody mentioned, there are new developments going up nearby on forty-eighth Street, Sixtieth Street and Thorn Apple River Drive. There have been no houses torn down as some of the documentation had indicated. So it is a desirable area to move to. And I would like to suggest that nobody on the board here or in the audience would really like to be next to an industrial place. Within two miles of their house. So I support what the board has suggested and what the Plan, Planning Commission has indicated. Uh, it needs to be left agricultural or possibly a park. Because that's just kind of in keeping with the area. I don't know how many of you people were here when M six went in, but that was vigorously opposed. Uh, at the time, because it cut right through that Thorn Apple Valley. And there were a lot of people that were very concerned about that. So we lost out on that one. We were hoping it would go further south. And a little bit more east so that it would not go through our community. Unfortunately, that happened. And so to have this then turned into industrial would be just another catastrophe, so to speak. And as it relates to the other comments where the expressway options were being considered a couple of weeks ago. You know, the perfect one that was actually already implemented was the exit at thirty-sixth Street. Why that wasn't continued right into the airport, as is suggested in this newest plan at that time, was kind of silly. Because the airport can be facilitated, and let's face it. The, the airport as it moved out here forty years ago was put at the far eastern end of the city. And obviously there were restrictions because of the river and Thorn Apple River Drive. But it can be accessed by forty-fourth Street, by the Belt Line, by M six getting off at the Belt Line. And now coming in from the north side, which services Grand Rapids proper, you can get off at thirty-sixth Street. And it's a perfect way to come in. So there's no need to have a Kilmer. Uh, and, and Thorn Apple River Drive exit, there was no need for a forty-eighth Street exit. Because the, the airport is properly serviced. We're kind of landmarked, uh, land bounded because of the river. So, um, thank you for the time and thank you for the support.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Article Six, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
That's a motion by Trustee Shipley to approve the consent agenda, supported by Trustee McDonald, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have no financial actions or unfinished business tonight, which brings us to Article Nine, New Business. Item zero one nine twenty-two-three, Acceptance of Our Treasurer's Resignation and Resolution of Appreciation. Treasurer Pierce previously submitted his letter of recommend, uh, excuse me, of resignation. Before we accept that and adopt the resolution recognizing his exemplary service, does the board have any comment?
I think, uh, the things that I said last meeting still stand. Ken has. Has represented every resident, every business of this township. Without any selfishness. He's always been a guidance to many of us. And we followed his recommendations with where we are today. We're a very successful township. We got great residents. We're controlling what happens within our borders. And Ken, I'd like to thank you and, and your wife for all and everything that you've done.
Clerks, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Trustee Kessel.
I'll make it brief. Um, having had the opportunity to serve with Ken on committees over the years, I said the same thing last time. Um, he has a common sense approach to him and, and was very supportive of things that. Needed to be done that ultimately helped improve the township to be a better condition than it was before. I enjoyed serving with you, Ken, and I can't thank you enough for what you've done for Cascade. Sorry.
Clerk Slater, before we act, would you please read aloud the preamble and the, uh, and the, of the resolution?
Whereas Kenneth B. Pierce was appointed to the position of Township Treasurer of the Township Board of Trustees on November fifth, two thousand nine. Whereas Treasurer Pierce was subsequently elected to the position of Treasurer by the residents of Cascade. In two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen, and two thousand twenty. And whereas Treasurer Pierce has dedicated over thirteen years of his life to maintaining the fiscal strength, transparency, and integrity of Cascade Charter Township. And whereas Treasurer Pierce has announced his retirement from the position of Township Treasurer, now therefore be hereby resolved. The Cascade Charter Township Board hereby expresses its heartfelt gratitude to Treasurer Pierce for his selfless and outstanding service. To the Cascade Charter Township community.
Thank you, Clerk Slater.
Do we have a motion with that resolution?
Support.
We have a motion to accept Treasurer Pierce's resignation with regret and to adopt the resolution. By Clerk Slater, supported by Trustee McDonald. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Absolutely.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lessperance.
Yes. Motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry.
Treasurer Pierce.
Treasurer Pierce. Since you're on your way out, we should have put you in front of those pushy developers and you could have gone out with a bang. On behalf of the entire board, Ken, we want to present you with this plaque. It reads, in grateful appreciation of your thirteen years of outstanding dedication and service. Two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-three.
Didn't spell the name right.
Might have some aftermarket value on that, I don't know. Probably not, in public funds. Now, to add this picture, which I'm sure will be prominently displayed. But we hope that this will always remind you of your friends and colleagues in the township hall. And the many contributions you've made to our Cascades. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Good job, Ken.
Item zero two. Zero twenty-two-three. Request to close public streets for the Grand Rapids Triathlon. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. John Conkling, uh, Grand Rapids Triathlon Race Director, Ada resident. So we once again are holding our twelfth, uh, year of the Grand Rapids Triathlon. Um, obviously, we did not have a COVID year, so technically it was, uh, it would be year thirteen, but, uh, it's twelfth year. Uh, the event continues to grow and thrive. Uh, we've worked very closely with, uh, Sandra, uh, Ada Townships. Um, they passed everything on Monday night. I went for their board. Uh, nothing has changed from previous years. We continue to work hard to. Keep the event at the, the level it's at and try to improve every, uh, aspect we can.
Thank you for choosing this area to do it. Very popular.
We're very happy to be here.
Trustee Shipley.
As I've mentioned every year, that you stood up here, living along the path. It's been a real pleasant surprise. I guess not a surprise anymore about how well it's run and operated. For us, the residents that have to kind of safely wander down the street. We try and stay off the street, uh, while you're running, but there's times that you have to. And I would like to thank you and your organization for caring about this community.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Question, further discussion?
I move to approve as the resolution, uh, for Grand Rapids Triathlon. Close support streets in June tenth, eleventh, twenty-two-three.
That's a motion by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Shipley. To close the public streets for the triathlon as stated. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Kessel.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Treasurer Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerk Slater, yes. Supervisor Lessperance.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Very much.
It'll be here before we know it, right?
When I know it.
Uh, item zero two one twenty-two-three, Consider the Creation of a Communication Specialist Position. Manager Slaysey.
Great, thank you. So since two thousand seventeen, we've used, uh, Sabo PR for communications and public relations services. At the time, Sabo came highly recommended to the township by several other area municipalities. Um, we started with sixteen hours per week of in-house services in two thousand seventeen. Uh, and Sabo currently provides an embedded team member for sixty-four to ninety-six hours per month. Uh, in addition, the township has access to a host of other team members and services on an as-needed basis, uh, on a fee schedule, most recently updated in two thousand twenty-two. And for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the township budgeted eighty-four thousand dollars for the service. Uh, so since the onset of the partnership, uh, we've been served by two in-house Sabo team members. And our current team member Hunter Zuck, uh, has been with the township since two thousand nineteen. We were recently informed by Sabo PR that Mr. Zuck is receiving a promotion in the Sabo organization. That's precipitating a need to replace his position, so the township wished to continue our current arrangement. So we began this conversation at the February eighth Township Board Meeting, uh, and we held a discussion related to our communication services with the township. And the consensus at that time seemed to be that while the partnership of Sabo has served the township well. Our communication program and efforts have grown to a point where there may be a more effective and efficient for the township to pursue. Hiring its own full-time employee to manage the township communication program. Uh, should be noted, this process was pursued by other area Sabo PR clients, most recently Plainfield Township. Uh, in the C A D Wyoming a couple of years ago, who both transitioned from a Sabo PR embedded communication services to their own full-time personnel. It was also discussed that if the solution, if this solution was pursued, the township may still need to continue its relationship with Sabo PR. On an as-needed or project basis, uh, and I would compare that relationship most similar to what was recently approved by the Township Board. With our engineering services, when we hired our own full-time engineer, but continued to pursue a partnership with a, uh, firm. In the case that we needed, uh, specific expertise. So based on that conversation, a draft job description's been developed for an internal full-time communication specialist. Uh, the position description was developed in cooperation with Sabo PR to ensure that it captured the totality of services currently being offered. And has been reviewed and approved by the Township Human Resources Director. Uh, attached to the report, you'll find the recommended job description and a more forward-facing position advertisement document will be developed prior to the posting of the position. It's recommended for a pay grade five, which is similar to other non-management professional positions in our organization. And reflects the current market for the skill set. And then for two thousand twenty-three, pay grade five salary range is just shy of fifty-five thousand. Uh, to seventy-three thousand and change. Uh, so again, I included the proposed job description for our communication specialist in your packet, as well as our current agreement with Sabo PR. So I think we all agree that our communication program and strategy has expanded to the point where there is forty hours worth of work available. Uh, we've seen that recently where we've had to prioritize some of the work on Hunter's plate, off of his plates, uh, because he doesn't have enough time. To complete it all in the current, uh, arrangement. Uh, with our current Sabo rep receiving a promotion, the timing appears right for the township to create a new full-time communication specialist. Uh, the ability to support the position with a continued relationship with Sabo PR on an as-needed or project basis. Will ensure that we still have access to skills and services that may not be available in a singular communications position. Uh, should the Township Board approve the position, we're anticipating advertising the position throughout March. With interviews in late March or early April and onboarding in late April. Transition plan is currently being discussed with Sabo PR team, and they've ensured they'll make the transition go as smoothly as possible. So as I mentioned earlier, we did allocate eighty-four thousand dollars for communication services in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. And a portion of that can be dedicated to the new position, uh, with the need for a budget amendment unlikely. Uh, depending on the salary that's assigned, an increase for the position, including benefits, which typically adds fifteen to twenty-five percent. May be necessary when we begin to prepare the fiscal year twenty-four budget. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and staff is recommending approval of the creation of the communication specialist position.
Questions, discussion?
As before, I think that our, our township is growing rapidly. We pride ourselves in having a very transparent operation. And I would, uh, recommend that, uh, we go ahead and approve this, uh, creation of a communication specialist.
Can I ask a question, though? And, and, um, this might be the way to go. How does that work? It's my understanding that we have current staff that may have the communication education and background. Um. Can we take that into account? As far as being efficient, using staff that we have? Would that's, would this process still include that evaluating? I'm just wondering if it's.
Yeah, at the very minimum, the process would still include that. I would also encourage that employee to apply for this position.
Okay, that was a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee McDonald. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item zero two-two twenty-two-three, Requests for the Use of Township-Owned Floodway Property.
So we're in receipt of a request from residents Jason and Kathy Marvin to construct a seawall protection on the township floodway. Property on the riverbank between the Marvin's property located at thirty-three hundred Thorncrest Drive Southeast and the Thorn Apple River. Uh, the township owns title to all the property between the river's edge and the six-six-six foot elevation line. Uh, so the township has a previously adopted policy for the use of the floodway property by the adjoining property owners. Uh, the relative language is that adjoining private property owners who wish to use the floodway properties for their use and enjoyment must receive approval. From the Township Board before they make any land changes to the floodway properties. And historically, we have considered, uh, seawalls or shore reinforcement as a change to, uh, the land. Precipitating approval of Township Board. So the Marvin's are proposing approximately a hundred and fifty-three linear feet of seawall shoreline protection. Using SSP seawall with a two to three foot landward return. Uh, in your packet, I include the Eagle permit for the proposed project, the site topographic survey and proposed sketches. As well as the copy of the relevant policy. So the request from the Marvin's meets the guidelines for approval, except by the township policies. The cursory review of the project area shows that the seawall shoreline protection is a common item on riverfront property within the township. Uh, would note that construction in the floodway is still governed by the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. And even with the township permission, the Marvin's will need to obtain an Eagle permit prior, uh, before a construction can commence. Uh, DK, DK Construction has submitted an application to Eagle on behalf of the Marvin's. Uh, but permission to use the township land for the activities is required before Eagle will process the application. There's really no financial ramification to approving the request. And the recommendation from staff is to approve the request from the Marvin's to construct the seawall shoreline protection. On the township floodway property adjacent to their property pending receipt of an Eagle permit for construction. And I believe the Marvin's or a representative of them are here tonight. I haven't met them in person, but they said.
Questions, discussions? And if Mr. Marvin would like to say anything, he's more than welcome. We'll be a lot friendlier. Oh, Trustee Shipley.
Oh, as a previous resident with riverfront property, I, I recognize how important it is to maintain your banks. Uh, soon you'll have trees washing out, et cetera, et cetera. Not only does it maintain the value of that property, but it maintains the value of the township. And certainly of the river. Uh, we have our challenges on the river and we don't need any more, so. Uh, with that, I would recommend approving the request.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Third, it's a motion by Trustee Shipley, supported by Trustee Kessel. To approve the request for the use of the township-owned floodway property. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next, item zero two-three twenty-two-three, Request from the Lessie, this is the, uh. Tuffy currently at Thorn Apple River Drive in Cascade to assign lease of six-eight-nine-six Cascade Road. To a third party. Welcome, Mr. Hogan. Manager Swayze, if you want to, I don't know if you want to introduce it and turn it over, or however you would like to do it.
Yeah, so I can talk about it real quick, just for members in the public that may not be aware. Um, so township currently owns, uh, sixty-eight ninety-six Cascade Road, as you mentioned, commonly known as Tuffy. Uh, and we've received requests for them to allow the assignment of the lease to Mavis Discount Tire. So we did purchase this property in two thousand twenty, uh, and inherited a lease with a current tenant. That lease began in March of two thousand. The lease began in March of two thousand seventeen, ran for five years through February two thousand twenty-two. In the lease agreement, there were two additional five-year lease extensions available at the sole discretion of the tenant, which would extend the lease first through February two thousand twenty-seven, then again through February two thousand and thirty-two. The tenant has enacted both of those extensions. There's questions about whether the second extension is even eligible to be enacted yet. But it doesn't change the fact that they could enact it when that can actually occur. The township DDA collects just shy of seventy-five thousand dollars a year per year in rent, though that will increase in March of two thousand and twenty-three. With that, we kind of turned the request over to Mr. Hogan to review both the lease and the financials from the potential new leasing and asked him here tonight to give the Township Board options of what they could possibly do.
And basically, as I see it, there's two options here. One is to simply say no, because the assignment is in the sole discretion of the township. So I think the township could be okay in saying no. You can't transfer to Mavis Tire. I have viewed the financials. Mavis Tire is a billion-dollar company with stores all over the northeast Chicago area. They've got four or five toughies in Michigan, seems to be a good company. So the other option, of course, is to agree to the assignment. I haven't seen the assignment form, so I think any approval, if you did agree to the assignment, I think it would have to be subject to council review or, you know, attorney review or something like that. The, I don't really want to get into the extension too much, but Mr. Swayze summarized it correctly. They exercise to. If they, if we say the second one was not properly exercised, they could just exercise it at the end of the first extension. So I think the township has to view the lease as going until twenty thirty-two. The only downs, possible downside of, well, there's several downsides maybe, and that's your decision, but one thing that would happen if the township approves the assignment is that the guarantee of Mr. Farland, who owns the current tenant, his guarantee would go away. I don't have any idea what the value of that guarantee is. Mavis seems to be a very solid, big, billion-dollar company. So I don't think that's a big concern. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I know when we bought that property, it was with the intent of expanding the park. And we knew they, Tuffy could extend the lease. But, you know, it, that, that corner is kind of an eyesore. A lot of people use it, Tuffy Muffler. And I would not be in favor of letting them sublease the property. I think we should get it back and then make some decisions, the DDA, on what they're gonna do with that property. We had one plan that we didn't approve pending some adjustments to that plan. And I, I just think that kicking the can down the road doesn't give us till twenty thirty-two potentially.
Yeah, the lease can be extended by the tenant till twenty thirty-two. And the township doesn't have any control over that.
Right, but if they sublease that we made, so we, we could refuse the subletting of that lease, right?
You, township could do that. It's an assignment, not a sublet. A sublet is letting somebody come in underneath it. So it'd be an assignment. The old tenant would be out, the new tenant would be in. You could refuse to do that, and I'm assuming then the deal would not go through with Mavis Tire.
And that would be for them to decide, right? The township ultimately, at our discretion, can say, no, we made this agreement with Tuffy. And then it's on the negotiation between Tuffy and Mavis.
Would have to, would have to continue in some other way.
Yep, and it's not our prob, I mean, not that it's not our problem, but.
It is the township's sole discretion.
Yep.
I think we all can agree that yellow's pretty ugly. But at the same time, Bobby provides a huge service to our residents. And as for many years, I did stop and talk to him today, and he said he would be, he would like to continue doing his work there. And then if you throw in the eight hundred thousand dollars over the next ten years, I, I think we really gotta look at not only the money, but the public service that he provides. His parking lot is always full servicing our residents.
Do you know, trustee Nord, because I stopped in and talked to him before this, this, before the meeting was originally scheduled for last week. And it was my understanding that that dedicated employees that we've all probably used for business had anticipated the change and had planned for it, and that they may not be part of the transition.
He said he was planning on staying as of this morning.
As of Mavis, with Mavis?
Yeah. So it's something to put some thought to. I know, like I said, a lot of our residents use Bobby for their auto repairs and eight hundred, eight hundred thousand is kind of hard to turn down, no matter how the yellow is.
Ben has a comment. Oh, excuse me.
So please excuse me talking in generalities, you know, I don't like to negotiate in an open meeting and obviously we're. Is there a third option where the board could potentially looking at negotiating approval based on some type of give back from Mavis?
Yes, yeah, we could, we could certainly do that, too. That's a third option.
So if we wanted to say.
I mean, that opens up in kind of an infinite number of options, but yes.
Yeah, for sure. For example, if we wanted to say we're willing to approve this, but you have to agree that you're not going to enact the final five years, at least we could get guaranteed us getting the building a little bit closer. Maybe, you know, that building is not in great shape. You know, maybe Tuffy or maybe Mavis is only interested in acquiring the franchise. So maybe we tell them, yeah, you could have two years to figure out where you're gonna move your franchise and then get out. So I think instead of saying just straight out no, there may be an opportunity for us to, you know, find the benefit for the township for approving it. Just something to keep in mind.
Do we have, so legally, we can make our consent conditional? Like it comes with conditions?
Sure, because, because the approval is in the sole discretion of the township, you could add whatever you want for conditions, yes.
Up for renegotiating however long they maybe have?
I like that rule.
Yeah, I like Ben's idea because if our purpose is to get that property for a park, we don't want to keep extending the lease indefinitely, right? I like the idea of giving them time to, like, they want to acquire the franchise and get established. And like Ben said, give them some time to figure out where they're going. I like that idea myself.
I, I just wanted to add to Timmy's point about, well, you know, they service our residents. That's true. But doesn't mean that our residents wouldn't follow them if they went elsewhere. The prior business to Tuffy Muffler was Kunis Autobody. And they moved their business. And when they did, and they have exploded. Matter of fact, they can't even take the business they've got. They've, they've, they've expanded in Cascade Township. So, you know, they were in that spot, Kunis Autobody, they moved, they grew, and the residents followed them. And I think this would be the same for this, if residents are really tied to the business and there's exceptional service, they'll follow. So I kind of, I'm going with, with what Sue and Ben have kind of said about maybe some flexibility here to, you know, maybe give this some thought and some conditions.
Yeah, if we have that flexibility, I could live with that, but I didn't want to just give cart launch and lease extension for that long a period of time. I think we should get it back sooner than that.
And I know they've expressed frustration with they have to deal with that property, too. It's not their favorite spot. So you, you do raise a good point, trustee McDonald. Be a hard place.
So in theory, we could go back and negotiate, you know, some other deal. I mean, you're authorized to negotiate further on and, you know, and our consent to the assignment is based on certain conditions.
So it's Mavis?
Mavis. I think Mavis, or I'm not sure.
Yeah, Mavis Discount Tire.
So if they're a billion-dollar company buying competitors' franchises, and this, we're not the only one, they have to have realistic expectations that this, the actual property, all they have is a lease that could be up to ten years. So, I mean, we're not pulling the wool out from rug under, out from under them. They kind of know what to expect. They're not buying a building.
They, they, they do know what to expect. I've made it very clear that it's not gonna go beyond ten years.
No new roof, no nothing. Did you tell them?
They probably even checked to see what the zoning was.
Or they could just plow through behind the scenes and put up a sign. Anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we let.
Specific, well-crafted motion?
I make a motion that we allow our legal department and our full-time staff to go back and see if there were some options that could be negotiated in that would be beneficial to the township, the residents, and the service that they provide there. And I don't think we have to make a decision tonight, do we?
No, you don't have, we can come back once we've negotiated something that we think could be acceptable.
Take a vote on that.
Correct. Correct. Come back with some recommendations based upon the concerns that the Township Board has expressed tonight.
We can do that.
Well, good. I support that.
So, and I'm just trying to figure out how to word it. The way it's on the agenda is consider the request from the lessy to assign the lease. So if we're considering the.
That request we have to deal with, and then you can vote if you want.
We're not, we will, we're not doing anything, but we refer, refer to legal counsel?
Sure. I'm not a lawyer.
So we're considering it, but we're not doing anything except directing our legal counsel to go back and negotiate hardball. Two years, maybe?
Yep.
I can do that and negotiate, and then we can come back.
Just procedurally, Ben, should this be tabled until we come back?
We should vote no if we're gonna deal with it.
I think you can do it either way. Whatever you're comfortable with.
Make a motion to table the, table the topic pending more information.
A motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to table this agenda item. And we will see you back shortly.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Article ten, closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen point two-six-eight subsection H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. We will entertain a motion for closed session.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Abort.
It's a motion by trustee Kessel, supported by trustee Shipley, to enter closed session based on material that's exempt from public discussion. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Slater, yes. Commissioner Westbridge.
Yes, we are now in closed session, which means we will convene in the little room back there. And then this is the last agenda item, but afterwards, we'll still have the public comment, board comments. Hope you'll stay.
Yes, please stay, folks. We love you. I know Ada doesn't care about you, but we do.
I'm with you.
Hundred percent.
We keep these stuffs.
Yeah.
Right.
We turn back in after we discuss.
So.
Yep. Very good.
Your motion going?
Make the motion and we return to normal session.
The motion by trustee Shipley to return to open session, supported by trustee McDonald, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now back in open session.
Madam supervisor, I make a motion that we take action for our legal counsel to take action as discussed in the closed session.
Support. I'll give him support of that one.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Kessel. Ship. Oh. To.
Kessel.
For legal act, to direct legal counsel to take action as instructed in closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article twelve discussion having none this evening, we will be now at public comments. Any comments whether on the agenda or not? Um. Be welcome. Evening, Mr. Holcomb.
Good evening, Brian Holcomb, thirty-four fifteen, Gunstone Court, Southeast. We're gonna tag team you, so we want six minutes.
We can tighten it up a little bit.
Bob Kramer, thirty-five ninety, Meadowwood Trails. I actually, we were here, I was here, maybe eight months or so ago, and talked about the subject of Egypt Creek landscaping on Thorn, Thorn Apple Drive. And I was asked to send pictures or share information, anything I had, and I sent things by email and things, and I just decided to to make us easier and make hard copies, so you could actually all see. I, I wanna share with you that those pictures are taken from my backyard. They're not enhanced, I didn't, I didn't, that is what I'm looking, my wife and I look at daily, out our bedroom windows and out our backyard. And it's interesting to me tonight with the subject that was on, that you all addressed much earlier tonight about protecting residents and the situation with industrial. I'm asking who protected us? My values have gone down, my property value is gonna go down when I go to sell this home. I was wondering, anyone looking out off our balcony, off our deck, or off our patio in the back, or out the windows of our kitchen, our dining room, and our, and our bedroom? And that's what I look at. The second, third pages there, those were just Thursday last week, the snow at ten-thirty at night.
With the light.
All that light. Coming through our, our windows, coming through and, and, and at ten-thirty, going on eleven o'clock. Sat there for an hour with the light beams on and, and just parked out there. Today really struck me, matter of fact, today motivated me to come in here. I, I went to take our dog for a walk, went out back, and I was hit with this wall of, of smell that I couldn't identify. It was like chemical. And I stopped and I looked and there's black and gray smoke coming out of a burner they have on, on the building, I think they're split wood, they burn for heat, but I don't know what they're doing inside. But obviously, whatever was burning was not wood. My eyes started watering, tearing up, and I got out of there, and I went to get my camera to take a picture, and by the time I got back, I, um, that subsided. The smell was there, you can't take a picture of that, unfortunately. But it's just very, very frustrating. It's to the point where I'm not even comfortable living here anymore. We have guests come in and look at that and say, this allowed, I've had guests actually say Cascade allows this. This business has no business being in a residential area, running pretty much twenty-four, seven, around the clock, coming and going, and interfering with our livelihood. I, I turn around and I look, all my neighbors, the, the ordinances and the things as a resident that I have to uphold and have to abide by is not fair. My neighbor does not have to. That's my neighbor, it's the closest neighbor I have to our home.
Sir, how long have you lived?
Excuse me?
How long have you lived at that residence?
Fourteen, fourteen years now, yeah.
And, um. Was it like this when you moved in?
When we moved in, it was, it was nothing but a storage building for the lawn equipment to maintain the golf course. They used, they got, they cut grass in the morning, they'd be done by the time the country club opened for golf for the day. That was the building that Paul Van Putten used to store the land, the, the grass cutting equipment for Tom. And they would store it in there, and by, by eight in the morning, you wouldn't hear anything out of there, it was all put away. And maybe in the early evening, after the course closed, they'd come out, work on the flower beds and do things to prep for the seasonal stuff. But very minor, you wouldn't even know they were there.
Did you think it was a problem then?
Absolutely not. And when we moved in, absolutely not, it was, there was nothing to be a problem, it wasn't even, it would operate during the, the time of the golf course. It would open in, in, in spring and in May and close in October. And it was quiet from that point until the next May. Now, it's, it's ten-thirty at night, two Thursdays in a row, because of the weather, these trucks lining up, sitting there with their, they play music. Well, you can hear it, it vibrates that real heavy bass music that you hear these young people play, thumping, thumping, thumping away. And it comes right, we filled in our home, and, 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 you know, and we're sitting there, and we'd look out the window and these lights are coming right through. Sometimes I actually think it's done to antagonize us, I really do. Um, he verbally assaulted me one time because I was out there taking pictures and his crew got upset. And he had a conflict with it, I did not engage, I didn't engage, the more I didn't engage, the angrier he got. And I had to put up with him for several weeks after that, every time I went out behind their house yelling, waving, and swearing at him. So I, I think it continues, anytime he sees me out there, he sees me with a camera, they seem to put on a little show for me. And I'm getting very tired of it, I really am, I, I think in Cascade and what we pay and the way we expect our lives to be upheld and our, our community, um, I shouldn't have to deal with this at all. I didn't ask for it, and it was allowed to come in, and it was allowed to operate. Nobody protected us. That very top paper on there is the area of the property line, you can see our home. Our home faces the back of that business's parking lot.
This is your home?
That's correct. And that, that home is, you look at the angle, look at the, where the house, it's, it's kind of, it's a long ranch. Yes, that's it. And those pictures that all that are included, there was a travel trailer sat there all summer long with a waste tank underneath it. TV antenna was up, lights were on inside of it, that picture's right in there. Sat there all summer.
He currently has multiple vehicles on his lot that have not moved in probably a month, because of the snow building up on him, eight, ten, maybe even twelve.
Yeah.
I think he only has three employees, I've always said he's using this facility, renting it out, leasing it out, having other people come in, which is not what he's supposed to be doing. Uh, we need to put our thumb on him rather than let him get away with all this crap. He shouldn't be allowed to do it.
They were laid last fall down in the creek that I was always so concerned that they were filling in, I actually took a picture of the property state, that his property is in the middle of the creek, and there's a picture of it in there. You can see up, but to the left of that, where they're pushing the land, they bringing, uh, materials in from other properties, putting it in, pushing it down, he wants to his property, it's very clear. Some of the trees are actually leaning down towards the creek.
I do not wanna cut you, I mean, I just am a, to be consistent. Uh, but I hear you.
Yeah.
Just try to conclude because that giving you guys away more time than the others.
It's not, it's not a problem, I thank you, I.
Have we heard from Eagle on the? We have.
No, I was saying, good question.
Oh.
I don't know.
Have you heard yet from Eagle, Ben?
Yes, so, uh, we did file our FOIA request, and Eagle initially had a compliance inspection scheduled for February first that was canceled because of weather. So, right now, there is a compliance inspection scheduled for March seventh. Um, that's the last communication we got in the FOIA, so, um, uh, we filed another FOIA Monday, uh, because it had been a month since the last time we filed it, so typically takes five to ten days for us to get the response before we see if there's any more communication, but as we know right now, their compliance inspection is scheduled for March seventh. So as far as the pictures are concerned, there, there are several in here that are township ordinance related, so myself and Madison, and several that they've already, they got their warning, right? So, uh, Madison and I will have a conversation with Foster Swift shortly and figure out what the next step is, but, uh, the warnings are, are done at this point.
I think we just need to issue the follow-through on the ticket or whatever the red, whatever the next step is, I think the board, at the board, if it's okay, the board directs.
Yeah, so this is exactly what we use tickets for, right? So in contrast to the house on Cascade Road where we were getting compliance, it was just taking longer than we wanted, it's clear here that we're not getting compliance, and that's what tickets should be used for.
And as many tickets as you can issue based, I don't know how many violations.
Every day? You do one every day? Are they expensive?
Uh, they're not expensive, but they're accumulative, so, uh, we get direction from Foster Swift on exactly how.
Do it.
According to the, uh, Eagle, when they sent them cease and desist, and they were filling in, which Brian Hillibrands came out and took pictures, that was on the sixteenth, and the following week, on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-sixth, they were still pushing around dirt, trying to make it look better, after asking for more time, what, to hide what you're doing? They're not supposed to be moving anything at all, according to what.
Those pictures of what they were, the earth they were moving are in.
Yeah.
So, and you're already doing this, but please continue to document if you see potential, that kinda stuff? What about, I still am not clear, so we've got the environmental aspect, that's right now the state is handling, it's on their plate. Basic nuisance zoning ordinance issues, what about, and I just don't understand enough about it, but basically you've got a non-conforming use, so there's a reason, you know, they got an exception. The, the expansion of scope of the, it may be sort of the same use, but what about the fact that the scope has really expanded? Because this is, I mean, the whole point is to closely monitor these non-conforming uses that because you closely monitor them, so they don't expand into something else, and it seems like that's exactly what's happening here, so just from a land use perspective, there's gotta be some teeth, so that when somebody slips through and gets some kind of non-conforming use, they don't just get to run with it, I just don't understand the, from a land use perspective.
According to the attorney, you know, there's, there's parts of that that are gray areas, and there's part of that that aren't gray areas, right? So if somebody is using it for a landscape business, and all of a sudden they start a nursery that wasn't there beforehand, uh, that's a clear change in, in use, right? So, the gray area comes when the, the technical use hasn't changed, but the, the vastness of the use has changed. So, you know, you were providing snow plowing for, you know, a hundred people before, and now you're providing snow plowing for five hundred people. So that's something that's a little bit more gray area, and we can continue to talk to attorney about that.
I think I'd like to see it this, if it's a gray area, when you consider the reasoning behind it, that's why we've got zoning to protect, that's why you don't let certain uses, that's why we don't want industrial next door to residential for these exact same reasons, it's not fair to the residents. So if this one slipped through, but it slipped through as a much smaller, quieter operation, and you've got a gray area, it seems to me, if the township wants to be taken seriously, and our laws mean, I mean, we mean what we say, then we got counsel, I think we need to interpret the gray area on the side of why we have a zoning ordinance to begin with, instead of just waiting and letting, because otherwise, it's gonna happen in more places, and we're still cleaning up the old direct, the old planning director's messes. So this has been going on long enough, I think if there's a gray, gray area, it's time for legal, I mean, that's where, that's why we've got municipal attorneys. With this land use situation, unless I'm missing something, but I just haven't, there hasn't been a clear answer, so.
I think you just ticket them, you know, what.
For the nuisance.
Yeah.
But we gotta look at it from the land use perspective, and, and at least get a decisive answer where if there's a gray area, and arguably you can make the argument, we need to make the argument, so that people take our zoning seriously, and they don't put up industrial signs and agricultural land, and then play behind the scenes, and it comes up to the point where it's about ready to happen. Otherwise, I mean, we've gotta be respected, and our laws have to be followed, it, it's gonna keep happening.
I'd have a question, so if it's a gray area, can we make it black and white and sue them?
That's what legal, that's why you pay lawyers. And we've got the best municipal law firm in the state, so there's a reason they say you can't beat city hall. I don't know why, there's a desire, I don't know, we have nothing to be afraid of, I, I'm sick of people just, I'm sick of cleaning up messes.
Yeah.
I sound like, I don't even like to hear my voice right now, I'm just grumpy and tight.
Then if, if tickets are issued, as a phrase comes, he goes, eh, so what, and he goes down and pays a thirty dollar fine or whatever. What's the next step? We issuing them other, another ticket, or does he get called into court, or?
Ding ding. Make it expensive.
That's just the ticketing nuisance issue, I wanna just, I wanna a legal memo on the, on whether, as far as land use goes, how it started, what was permitted then, what it is now today, if you can just, otherwise, I'm gonna go for a special use permit, and then I'm gonna milk it, and.
I will tell you that back when the, when the property was being parted out, when the development for the, uh, they're coming in with the old country club was. Um, what was passed on to us in our association, all of, everybody in our association understood it was going to be sold and used exactly the way it was as a golf course, storage. And I can actually find in minutes, I've seen minutes back when this was going on, where the board, there were trustees that questioned, and said we should turn it over and make it residential. You could see that, and, and you could follow it, and then it just stopped, and it's like, you can't follow it anymore.
You know what year that was?
At thirteen, fourteen, I did took some digging, I mean, I was digging and reading and trying to find things, and I could find it. And there, there were, there was, you could see where the discussion was brought up about what to do with this, and, but it just kinda went away.
So you didn't find a vote?
No.
Interesting.
I think it got, I think it got put in with the, the development of the golf course where it was, it kinda tagged along. I don't think it was ever identified, and I think that's why as we as homeowners or residents, we're never invited to have an opportunity to come in and speak about it, what to do with this building. Um, we were notified to come in to talk about the development of the, of the apartments that were going in, but not this specific issue.
I, I wanna legal, I want an answer that we can have soon as possible to, to decide this land use issue, because that's a separate issue from the nuisance thing, and if they're allowed to do what they're doing, fine, but there's three different issues, and, and that hasn't been cleared, and it's been going on long enough that we need clarity and decisiveness, because I'm sick of that, I, thank you for being consistent, I mean persistent.
Well, thank you.
Both.
And this was helpful.
Very helpful.
Good, but I, I just whipped it together today, most of those are current, by the way, but they're not old, the ones where the weather kind of obviously back in the fall and spring. But a lot of that, especially the lights one, and it was just a week ago.
So Ben, when Eagle comes in, is it, is a chance they can talk to the residents? Uh, I would, I would assume no, I mean, they could attempt, you know, when it's going to be, um, Eagle wouldn't, they wouldn't even tell us when the inspection was, the only reason we got it was because we FOIAed, uh, the information, so they've made it clear when it's a potential for litigation, we have to go through the same process anybody does, else does to, to get the information.
Are these gonna, can we include these in the packet?
Oh, yeah. Well, they'll be in the zone. Don't you mean?
Yeah, however, and then can these go to legal counsel too?
Yep. I mean, I have a copy, I'll.
Section forty of our ordinance is the penalty phase of fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars, so that's how it's spelled out in our penalty phase.
Process wise, I just, I wonder, just what's, so someone gets a special use or some of the variation under a PUD, whatever the language is, and it's one size or, you know, one scope, and then it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger, I just don't know. I mean, this isn't the first time that this has happened, I'm sure here or anywhere, this has to be a common issue.
I would say it's particularly common.
Maybe because they nipped it in the bud earlier on, I don't know.
I I'm very uncomfortable that we're sitting here with our hands tied, so to speak. While this potential violator continues on his way.
You see how, so you see the, from the wetlands, that kinda perspective, that's at the state, right? Nuisance, thank you. Land use, there's. Glad you came.
It, you know, it's a, to me, it's a direct contradiction of everything you just talked about when the meeting started.
That's why it's so.
That's why it's.
And this is on a very minor, small scale, but it's still, to us, it's just as important as everything you were talking about tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
Every test.
It's not a small scale, it's huge.
It reinforces, yes.
That's how, that's on our house, that's what we look at out our window.
Is this considered light industrial? Landscaping business?
No, no.
What is this?
Agricultural, I believe.
Okay, so this, you wanna think about what light industrial does? But you guys are, not to minimize what you're going through.
Right, right, the, the impact of it, like I said, we don't even enjoy living in, in our home anymore.
We've seen your neighborhood, it's beautiful.
It is very nice. It was very, you know, and, and we try to keep it that way, I, we have one other resident that is not here, she's in Florida, it affects her as well, I mean, but it, it affects us most because of our proximity, others can kinda like, eh, you know, like, we don't really affect me. I listen to air impact wrenches, and, and the minute the weather gets mild, they open every garage door, turn up the sound, and start working on the equipment. And I listen to, to air, air compressors and, and area. And I listen to, to air, air compressors and, and area, it sounds like they said, it sounds like the stock car race back there, changing wheels and whatever, grinding blades, whatever they're doing. And it goes on. You know, it's frustrating for us, very frustrating. I had a realtor come over. We have a, a lot, an open lot with our property. And first thing he said, he walked in the back, he said, I don't know what I'm gonna do about that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and for the color photos.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your help.
Is there anyone virtually, Ms. Brott?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to participate in this public comment, please raise your hand, dial star nine by phone. Back to you.
Mr. Rizzi, welcome.
Scott Rizzi, seventy-two thirty-eight Cascade Road. Uh, I just wanted to thank Professor Pierce for his, uh, time as treasurer, and, uh, you know, you speak softly sometimes, but we all lean in to hear what you have to say, uh, because you always have great comments and great contribution to the board and to the township. So, thank you for your time. I thought about running, or not running, but I thought about applying for your vacancy, but you set the bar so high. I just didn't think I'd ever be able to get there.
Manager comments?
Yeah, just a couple items. It's been a long night. Um, talk about deer a little bit. Uh, Jeff Hughes is on vacation, so I guess I'll, I'll cover him. But really, two different deer issues that we're dealing with. Uh, the first, Peace Park, obviously, we, uh, redid the hunting regulations. I did pass out the initial, uh, report to you tonight. Um, so report that no deer were harvested from Peace Park. Um, there's only three permittes we haven't heard from yet. Um, of course, they're not eligible to reapply for a permit next year if we don't hear from them, but, um, uh, there's comments, you know, the comments that we did get through the processor in there, so you can read a little bit about what they had to say. Um, and we can have a conversation, uh, upcoming in the upcoming months, whether we need to change any of those regulations or not. Uh, as far as the deer study, uh, I had a chance to talk to Dr. Keys today, um, from Cornerstone, and review some initial data. Uh, surprise, surprise, there's more deer in Burton Park than should be there. Um, so him and his staff are, the students that he had doing the project um, are actually using this as a project for a national presentation competition, I guess. Uh, so they're shoring up their presentation, they'll be doing it at the end of March, and they'll be coming to the board in April to provide the data publicly. And we'll have some options about what the next steps could be for the township board, but, uh, the, uh, general consensus is, yep, there's more deer in the, the park that should be. Um, and they probably need to do something to, uh, control that. I don't know if you guys have seen Fire Station One, rising from the ashes over across the street, um, but the project is going, uh, extremely well. Uh, we've got a great project team over there, uh, between Chief Majors and Triangle and, uh, Williams, and, you know, it's interesting to see Williams and Triangle work together, but be opposed on some things as well. Uh, definitely makes us feel like we have people that are looking out for the township's interest on, on both sides of that. And then, of course, chief making sure that ultimately the project serves the, the department well, so, um, obviously, coming up fast, just a couple of things that, uh, you'll see in the coming months. The, uh, masonry walls, uh, for the main building will be completed on the seventeenth. And the apparatus bay will start shortly after that. You'll see roof trusses going up, uh, by March twenty-seventh, and the roofing actually beginning, uh, on April seventeenth. Uh, the plan is to have the building enclosed on May sixteenth and begin the interior on May seventeenth. And right now, we have a substantial completion date of, uh, September twenty-ninth. So, um, project is coming along good. We have not used any, uh, we haven't had any change orders or reused any contingency lot, lot yet. In fact, we've added money to the contingency for some credits in some areas. Uh, really proud of that at this point, because in a new building project, a lot of your contingency gets eaten up because you don't know what's underground, essentially. Uh, we've gotten through ninety-five percent of the underground work and haven't had to make any changes to the project. So, uh, that's a big boon for it, and we're crossing our fingers and hoping that it'll come in under. So, uh, we'll give, uh, uh, updates on that from time to time, but if, if you guys or the community has any questions about the project, uh, Chief Majors is always happy to talk about it. I see him poking around the fence like a little puppy dog over there every now and then, dreaming about when him and this team are gonna be able to get into it, so. Um, and I already said what I had to say about, uh, uh, Eagle Creek, so, um, uh, we will get on it for the stuff that we can do internally, and look forward to Eagle getting out there with their compliance team in early March. Thank you.
There's a lot of good stuff going on. It, we're solving some good, big stuff, but, yeah.
It's always a balance.
Yep. Manager comments. I'm sorry, board member comments.
Thanks for persevering through all this BS. I appreciate it. I wish I would could spin it out a little bit better. Um, I'm very proud of the board standing up for the residents. I wish I would could do something faster for Eagle Creek. Um, but that being what it is, and, uh, I don't like outsiders coming across into our borders telling us what we're gonna do in this township. That's all I have.
Really appreciate the planning commission's hard work, a lot of time and energy put in behind the scenes, doing really good stuff.
Just wanna thank everybody for their kind words. Jill and I have always believed in giving back to the communities in which we live. And we've done that in the past grade. So we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ken. Their motion?
I make a motion that business of this township board meeting haven't been completed, that we adjourn.
Second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by Clerk Slater, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
One of these days, I'll get my way.